For the January 5th, 2021 Monte Serena City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues.
Hello, everybody.
Unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you're allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback on public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. Calling to order the January 5th, 2021 meeting of the Monte Serena City Council. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mekachak.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ilahi.
Present.
And Mayor Luho.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Clerk or city manager, Mr. Leonardi, do we have any changes to the order of the day?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have no presentations. Do we have anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on any matters which are not on today's agenda? If so, please raise your hand and you will be recognized to speak. We have Susanna Craig and Ms. Craig, I will unmute you. If you will unmute yourself, you may begin speaking.
Great, thank you. As you all know, good evening, council and staff. I'd like to welcome Mr. Brian Kaczak to the city council. It is great to have someone with our interest in mind. So many thanks and congratulations. I come to you today to ask you to follow the example of the city of Los Catos and release a statement saying that Monte Serena does not condone and will not tolerate violence, intimidation and racist hate speech. The Stop the Steal rally that took place on January 2nd in Los Catos was full of violence, intimidation and racist speech. The Stop the Steal participants freely walked around North Santa Cruz Avenue with open containers of alcohol, had a bullhorn and set off sirens. They harassed pedestrians or Monte Serena residents and in fact beat a Monte Serena resident with a flagpole. My teenage daughter, who was walking down North Santa Cruz Avenue, was chased down by rally participants. She came home shaken and scared. Our neighbor was severely beaten with a flagpole and tossed to the ground, hitting his head on the sidewalk edge. As he was beaten, he was told to go back to China. He was accused of being a communist and a dog eater. This type of behavior is unacceptable and I ask for your condemnation of these acts and to work with the Police Department of Los Catos and Monte Serena and to DA, with the DA to bring this case to the court. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other hands raised, let's move on. Clerk Radcliffe, any written communications?
No.
Okay, then moving to the next order of business, which is the consent calendar. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on any items which are on the consent calendar? We'll open public comment at this time. Seeing none, going to the council, do any council members wish to pull any matters from the consent calendar for significant discussion? Or wish to ask simple questions without pulling the items? If so, now is the time to address that. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Maybe take a vote, please.
Okay, councilmember Mekachak.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ilahi.
Yes.
Mayor Luthold.
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. Moving forward, we have no public hearings scheduled for tonight. We have no unfinished business. So we will move to new business. The first item of new business is to consider and approve the council committee commissions assignments and the city ad hoc assignments. There is a staff report and city manager Leonardi, did you wish to comment on the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Luthold. Just a brief mention regarding the ad hoc committees. We currently have seven council ad hoc committees. Council should discuss relevance and determine if all seven are still desired. Last year, it was discussed revisiting ad hoc committee assignments twice annually, once after the goal setting and budget session, which would usually occur in June and once after the seating of the new council, which is this time of the year, December and January. And with that, I am available for questions if there are any.
Are there any council members wishing to ask questions of staff at this time? If not, we'll go ahead and open for public comment. If anyone in the public wishes to speak on matters, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the city manager, which of these ad hoc committees are currently underway and do any of these need to be wrapped up? And should there be any new ones? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, if Mr. Leonardi wishes to comment on that, certainly he can add, answer your questions now. And also, it was my intention to take up discussion among council members about the specifics of those ad hoc committees, whether any of them should be closed out, continued, and then who's going to serve on them. But let's go ahead and then hear from Mr. Leonardi first.
Thank you, Mayor Luthold. Regarding the current list of committees, I see wildfire and emergency preparedness as an ongoing and relevant committee. Good Neighbor Resolution, much of that was achieved last year with the resolution which was adopted, as well as the joint council and site and architecture committee meeting and the planning consultants that we had hired. So we are putting things in place on an ongoing basis. I'm not sure if that one would still be needed, but it is of course up to council. Housing legislation ad hoc, we are being promised many more housing bills or laws coming forward in the state assembly this year. So I think this one will be relevant, although at this time, we will be having a discussion on our next item regarding some housing matters. It has, I would say this one would be good looking forward. Veterans Memorial is of course ongoing. Customer orientation and operational excellence, that is up to the council if they wish to continue, but I feel like many of these items were broad reaching and are, have been handled on a staff level at this time. I'm not certain that this needs to continue, but again, up to council's discussion and discretion. Climate action ad hoc, I think this would be a good one to continue. And SB2 grant and ad hoc committee, most of the funds that are remaining will be utilized to hire a general plan consultant to redo our general plan to consult with us on the general plan moving forward. So I'm not certain if that one needs to continue when it comes to the type of scope of work or how to spend the money in those types of things. That would be my initial feedback prior to the council discussion.
Any further question of staff before we open this to public comment and then proceed to council member discussion? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item four regarding the ad hoc committees and the committees, commissions and committees assignments? Seeing none, I will open this to council discussion. And I will go ahead and indicate, it's my preference that we first run down the committee and commission assignments. I circulated a draft which was attached to the agenda today. I've had a little bit of feedback on that and wanted to see and run through that feedback and see if everyone's desires can be accommodated on this. I guess councilmember Ilahi, you had some indications of some preferences that you wanted to have some changes made. If you'd like to speak to those, you can make some notes and see if everyone's in agreement.
Sure, yeah, this is just talking about the committee and commission assignments.
Yes, let's go through that first.
Okay, so there is a, I wanted to be added to the Seneca County Cities Association or the Seneca Counties Association Legislative Action Committee. And then I wanted to be removed from the JPA Library Board and the Seneca VTA PAC and from the Seneca Valley Water District. And added as a, added to the Youth Commission Liaison. That's, that's what my request was for these committees.
Okay.
So maybe I'll take it one at a time, I guess.
Yeah, let me take those in reverse order, just because Youth Commission had a to be determined on it. Councilmember Lawler is the primary liaison to the Youth Commission. Do any other council members have any objection to Councilmember Ilahi being the Youth Commission second liaison?
I do not.
Okay, seeing none, that looks like that will be easy to accommodate. And moving back up, let's just go back up the list. The next one that you wanted was to be removed from the Santa Clara County Water District.
Yeah, I haven't altered on that, so.
Okay, do we have anyone who wishes to serve as the alternate on the Water District?
Aye.
Ms. Turner's got her hand up as willing to do that. Mr. Mekachak also. Is that, so the two of you are interested in that? Okay, why don't we take a look at how the assignments come out and as we move through these and then come back and make some decisions about that position for the alternate on the Water District? Moving up, let's see, we've got the VTA PAC. And you are the lead on the VTA PAC, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and I am also on the VTA Route 85 Corridor Policy Advisory Committee in the first position. I am perfectly content to give up both of those VTA positions. If Councilmember Mekachak is interested in the VTA, we could give those up as a package. Otherwise, if Councilmember Ilahi, you want to give that up and Councilmember Mekachak is not interested, I could potentially take it over, although I'm not enamored of the VTA assignment.
It's a good learning assignment for the first couple of years, so.
Councilmember Mekachak, any interest in dealing with the VTA or any aversion to dealing with the VTA?
So I'll give you my, my thoughts on, on what my name is next to. So joint venture Silicon Valley Network. I would prefer to give that one up. And I think that there's a fair amount of synergy between the Clean Water Board and the Water District and in particular, I think there's some opportunities between the Water District in understanding what's going on with the open space, mid-pen open space. I do a lot of mountain biking. And I think there's the opportunity to, to open up some lands and I'd like to be help make that happen. So that's my interest in the, in the Water District Commission. In terms of the VTA, if that's a good learning experience, then I'm certainly open to that.
Councilmember Lawler, would you be interested in giving up the primary position and then having Councilmember Mekachak be both Clean Water Board and Water District or did you want to hold your position on the Water District, having been there a couple of years?
I would actually like to hold that. I am, I'm happy with my assignments as they are. I, I'm in favor of continuity. So thank you.
Okay, and there, there is some definite benefit for continuity. So why don't we look at Councilmember Mekachak for the alternate on the Water District, the primary on the Clean Water Board? And that will kind of ease into those positions there, if that's all right. So let's plan on that. And I would recommend that both of the VTA positions move to Councilmember Mekachak. It is a good learning experience and get you involved with a lot of people who do know a lot about the changes going on in the valley. So why don't we put Councilmember Mekachak as the Route 85 Corridor? And also, the other was the where was it? Santa Clara County VTA.
Yeah, Seneca Valley.
Taking out Ilahi and I'm fine with the second position on that one. I've attended a meeting or two in the alternate and so I don't mind being involved as backup on that one unless there's some other reason to change things around. So let's, I think we've taken care of those. The Councilmember Ilahi asked to be released from the Library Board. I'm the lead on the library and will probably be able to attend all of the meetings. But if there is someone else who would like to be, yes. Ms. Lawler.
I'm happy to take the, the secondary position in that if you'd like.
On the library?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and put you secondary on the library then? Okay, so I believe we have addressed, oh, Councilmember Ilahi wanted to consider Cities Association or the Legal Legislative Action Committee. We have Councilmember Turner on the top of the Legislative Action Committee. And then on Cities Association, we have Councilmember Turner on the top of Cities Association. I think those are both Councilmember Turner's to continue if you so desire. Comments on that, Ms. Turner?
Yes, I'd like to stay on those because they're all consecutive, so it's easy to just stay on those, those committees.
Okay, and Councilmember Lawler, are you happy with the second position? Or would you be willing to or like to release some of those second positions to Councilmember Ilahi? I don't think there's necessarily any reason to, I think, Mr. Ilahi.
I'm happy with those positions, thank you.
Right, okay, so let's keep those. And Councilmember Ilahi, I think you're going to be looking at backing up and learning various new skills for potential mayorship as you back me up this year. So let's go ahead. I think we've addressed Councilmember Ilahi's concerns. And moving next to Councilmember Turner, did you have any additional feedback or changes that you're desirous of at this time?
Um, no, I'm fine with, with things the way they are.
Okay, Councilmember Mekachak, you asked to be taken off of Joint Venture Silicon Valley. Is, is there someone who wants to take on Joint Venture Silicon Valley? Is there anyone who has any insight as to what that is involving and has thoughts about Joint Venture Silicon Valley particularly?
I don't know how often that meets. That probably doesn't meet that often. Somebody know?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any information about that, so. I had put Councilmember Mekachak down for that. If you don't want it, certainly, I'm willing to fill in or perhaps Councilmember Ilahi.
Yeah, I mean, I can fill in. I don't know what the schedule is. It's probably just once every few months or something, so.
If that, so Councilmember Mekachak, did you, you did want to give up Joint Venture Silicon Valley, where I tentatively placed you?
That is correct.
Okay, so let's put Mayor Protem Ilahi in for Joint Venture Silicon Valley for now. And we'll revisit that if there are any issues. I'm happy to back up on that one. It had previously only had one person assigned to it and I don't think that it has much schedule. Okay, Councilmember Turner, you said you were generally happy with everything that you had there? Okay. And Mayor Lawler, previous, prior Mayor Lawler, I'm so used to that. You didn't want to make any changes, so Councilmember Mekachak, one more time through as we look at the updated version of this. Anything else that you wanted to comment on or change? I think we have everything covered at the moment.
No, I think that I'm good, thank you.
All right. So we will publish the updated schedule and then assuming that it's all correct, it will appear in the minutes next time for confirmation that we have gotten it all correct. If anything's incorrect at that time, we'll take a look at it. So moving on to the ad hoc committees, ad hoc committees are actually creations of council. And so we need to take a look at these and determine whether they are going to continue. We did reset several of these in August of 2020 with the idea that we would revisit them early in the year. They have a one-year horizon, so we can simply leave them open. But we should verify that we want to keep them that way and then take this opportunity to change members. So let's go through those just one at a time. Anyone have any comments on continuing or terminating wildfire and emergency preparedness? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I'd like to keep that even throughout COVID, we've had some exercises that we actually do. So that is very active still.
Okay, yes. Anyone else? Any other comments on wildfire and emergency preparedness before we turn to the membership on it? Seeing none, Councilmember Ilahi, oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Ilahi, are you, do you want to remain on that?
Yeah, no, I was going to give that one up if somebody else wants to take it.
I'll take it if you want to give it up.
Sure.
Go for it. To the other council members.
Any objections to Councilmember Mekachak taking that second spot on the ad hoc for wildfire and emergency preparedness? Seeing none, going once, going twice, sold. Turning to the Good Neighbor Resolution, that the city manager has indicated that he believes that this is generally taken care of. Any comments from council regarding disagreement with that statement or comments that we should indeed terminate this ad hoc committee at this time? Yes, Ms. Lawler?
I think it's fair to say that that's been accomplished. I think we can probably eliminate that.
Any disagreement from anyone regarding eliminating the ad hoc? Seeing none, let's go ahead and eliminate that ad hoc committee. The city attorney can tell us whether we need to formalize the termination of the ad hoc committee in a resolution when we're done at the end of this process, I believe. But for now, let's group things together. And so let's move through these with our decisions and then we can group it all at the end if we need to take a specific action to terminate. Regarding housing legislation ad hoc, we have Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Ilahi on the housing legislation ad hoc. Is anybody desiring to first terminate the ad hoc for housing legislation? Nope, strongly no. And in fact, we're, it's obviously going to be extremely active. So we do currently have that filled. If, I know Councilmember Turner should probably stay on that with her knowledge base and actions on it. Councilmember Ilahi, did you want to stay on the housing legislation ad hoc?
Yeah, I'll stay with that.
Okay, that is completed. Let's move to Veterans Memorial. We've heard that that is active and continuing, especially as we look at the build. Anyone desiring any changes, Mayor Protem Ilahi and Councilmember Lawler?
I think that's fine. I think that'll be completed this, this next year, once we get the building approved, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're moving forward with it. Steve's doing a good job with getting stuff together on it.
Okay, and again, no reason to change members of the ad hoc unless there's someone desiring to exit. So moving on to customer orientation and operational excellence. That was spearheaded last year by prior councilmember Labouvet with Councilmember Turner. A lot of things were accomplished there, perhaps not everything. But any thoughts about whether that should be terminated as an ad hoc committee and simply become part of our goal setting and budgeting for this year? Or should we be continuing the ad hoc? And I guess Councilmember Turner, you're on that ad hoc, your comments?
Yes, I think, I think we should continue it. In particular, I'm interested in continuing the strategic planning and the, and the budget planning as, as we move on. As we learn more things from Mr. Somaranes, he can, he can actually give us some, some insight into what works and what didn't work from last year.
Any other council member comments on customer orientation, operational excellence?
I, I am looking at seeing whether we should actually establish another ad hoc committee, mainly a finance administration committee that looks at all the monthly finances that come in. I mean, the warrant list and the payments that I'm making and reviewing some of the billing that's coming in. Because I, I don't, you know, we kind of look at the warrant list, but we don't have the inside scoop on it. It'd be good to get a couple of people on there. Mekachak is interested in something like that. He's a CPA also. And do a deeper dive than we get to do as city council members when we look at those documents. So I don't know if some of that stuff would come out of this operation committee or not. But I, there's an ad hoc, added ad hoc committee basically I'm proposing, so I'm bringing it up at this point to discuss. To see if, you know, some of those items from here would go into that finance committee. But the finance committee would itself have a role in just making sure on a regular basis it meets before the city council meets and figures out, you know, every once a month, review thing and give us some recommendations. Do a further deep dive than you get a chance to do.
Okay, thank you. That's good input. Perhaps we can formally bring that up on the future agenda items. I think ad hoc creation of new ad hoc committees needs to be a scheduled agenda item. So why don't we bring the potential for a finance ad hoc to the council at the next meeting as a future agenda item? And perhaps we can make a note that we may need to realign customer orientation and operational excellence with that committee also at the next meeting, if there needs to be a little realignment regarding some of the budget or finance issues between those two ad hoc committees, if they're not the same members. So.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes, Councilmember Mekachak.
I would like to volunteer to. I would like to volunteer to do a charter for the finance committee. I think that that is important and it would have the finance committee, I can think of what their role could be, so I would volunteer to do that for the next meeting.
Okay, that, that sounds, that sounds good. And I think in order to avoid Brown Act conflicts, we should consider making sure that the members of the finance committee and the scope of the finance committee does not cross or does cross, and we make a conscious choice to make it do that with the customer orientation operational excellence. So with that, yes, Councilmember Lawler?
I'm happy to, if we're keeping the customer orientation operational excellence, I'm happy to be on that with Councilmember Turner.
And that was going to be where I was going with my recommendation as well. So are there any objections to Councilmember Lawler as the second on the customer orientation operational excellence? Seeing none, let's put Councilmember Lawler in that position. And let's make sure to bring both the creation of a new finance ad hoc and possible coordination of how it will align with customer orientation and operational excellence onto the calendar for next time. All right, climate ad hoc committee.
Can I get back to the, this last committee if you don't mind, Mayor?
Sure, yeah.
Susanna Craig brought up an important issue today, and I don't know if that would be something the customer orientation and operation excellence would handle or some other committee would handle as far as respecting the rights of fellow citizens and acting accordingly. But somewhere along the line, maybe it's a different committee that would fit in, because we do need to keep, keep a track of that also, that all citizens are treated with respect.
Yes, thank you for that. And Councilmember Lawler?
I just want to remind everyone that that is in our mission statement and in our strategic goals every year. So that it is something that we, we, you know, observe and try to achieve every year.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if somebody needs to be assigned to monitor it, otherwise it's just kind of one of those items that just lies buried deep in our many things out there.
Yes, and I think that as Councilmember Lawler pointed out, the, we do have it as, as part of our mission. In terms of the committees and commissions, they're really designed to drive very specific projects. In terms of what Ms. Craig was speaking to, I viewed that as a probable future agenda item again to make a specific statement on behalf of the city and to have that discussion and look at what that would look like. If that's something that we can handle just as a council, as an agenda item, we could probably take care of that. If it's something that we have an ongoing issue and need a lot of input on, we can come back to it. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, and I also wanted to make a comment along the lines of Councilmember Lawler in that whatever Susanna Craig has brought up is something that we can solve immediately rather than throughout the year. So I think we could do that outside of the committee.
All right, so why don't we visit that first as a future agenda item later on on the calendar? And then we can be discussing it. We will have both customer orientation and operational excellence and discussion of the new finance related ad hoc, if that goes forward, what that will look like next week when we come to this. So we could talk about whether that's necessary at that time.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to climate ad hoc, this was a relatively new committee and Councilmember Lawler and I have been working on it and working with staff. I think it's well underway and making progress. So I don't see any reason for changes unless somebody wants to speak up about it at this point. Seeing none, let's move on to the SB2 grant ad hoc committee. We had Councilmember Labouvet previously on that and myself. The SB2 grant ad hoc committee was really looking at how to take advantage of SB2 funds. And that's the SB2 grant language in that ad hoc committee name. And then to develop a plan and to work with the necessary people to make sure that we are taking a good look at the general plan and focusing on ways that we can pursue Monte Sereno's goals. At the same time, we meet the requirements of the SB2 grant to, to make sure that we can put those funds to good use as we work on objective standards. Certainly, the feeling before was that there was need for council member ad hoc committee direct input on that as we go forward, not just putting this all on a consultant or putting it all on staff. So I think there is certainly a role which I see as possibly expanded beyond what the title implies there, but I think is in there in the statements, which is to really look at and work with the general plan update. And I think that's a necessary process. I'm happy to stay involved in that if one or more additional people wants to get deep into the weeds of overseeing and participating in the general plan creation and updating. Be happy to have someone else on the committee, or if other council members think that we should get rid of this committee, we can do that. Councilmember Turner, you've got your hand up.
Yes, I would be happy to be your alternate on this one.
Really, it's a partner in crime rather than alternate. Not a crime if there's only two of us, so that's good. All right, any other council member comments on this? Otherwise, my suggestion is we go forward, we add Councilmember Turner to this, and we take an active role in working with staff to to put those SB2 grant funds to work as we start to figure out what the new general plan is going to look like.
Yeah, so that ad hoc committee we need to formally revise, I guess, which we're going to do anyway with the motion, because that's, it's been a year now, so.
Oh, that's right. So we need to, so this motion, and thank you, Councilmember Alahi, so formalizing this at the end of the discussion today, we need to re-up the SB2 grant ad hoc committee assignment as part of the formal action we take at the end here. All right, did I lose a page or was that all of the committees and commissions?
That is all of them, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. So to addressing the question to our city attorney, what action do we need to take to re-up the SB2 grant ad hoc committee? And to confirm the assignments as discussed and remove the Good Neighbor Resolution ad hoc?
So these types of ad hoc committees really can just be created by, you know, by a minute order, which just takes a normal motion of the city council. Typically with ad hoc committees, I, because they are supposed to be temporary in nature. My recommendation is that, you know, you make clear that they have a limited duration and a, you know, limited scope of what they're supposed to accomplish during that period and that you let them expire. You know, if for some, something like, you know, you know, the wildfire prevention committee, you know, you would recreate that, you know, upon its expiration and, you know, indicate what it would do. So all the council needs to do tonight is basically, you know, introduce a motion and have it pass that specifies what these committees are that exists, or sorry, these, yeah, these ad hoc committees are that exist. Who's going to be on them? And, you know, if it's easier to just make a formal list and, you know, approve that list by, by motion, that's fine.
Okay, in order to be as clear as possible, I will go ahead and make the motion that first we revoke and terminate the Good Neighbor Resolution ad hoc committee. We continue the August 4th, 2020 committees, the balance of those committees. We continue those forward with the expiration as indicated on them, making no changes to the expiration. We add Councilmember Mechacheck to the wildfire and emergency preparedness ad hoc, replacing Councilmember Alahi. We add Councilmember Lawler to the customer orientation and operational excellence. We will start a new. Oh, and to be clear, I think I mentioned we added Councilmember Mechacheck to wildfire. If I didn't, that is part of this. We will go ahead and as of today, January 5th, we will create, recreate the SB2 grant ad hoc committee. I don't see any changes necessary to the charter for that committee. We will add Councilmember Turner as the second member of the ad hoc committee. So the motion is as stated, do we have a second or any corrections?
Also.
Councilmember Lawler?
So I'll second, but I think that Councilmember Mechacheck.
Okay. Whoever the city clerk caught first?
Okay, motion given by Mayor Luthold, second by Councilmember Mechacheck. Roll call vote, Councilmember Mechacheck?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alahi?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you all. And the committee and commission assignments pages will be attached to the meeting of the next minutes. Those are actually formalized by the mayor, so I will take care of those, assuming that everything is correct. Once we make the changes, we'll circulate that and confirm it, and you'll see it all at the next meeting. Meanwhile, let's go ahead and move on to agenda item number five, which is discussion and direction regarding the regional housing needs. RENA 2023 to 2031 allocation numbers. We have a staff report about that. So city manager, would you like to speak to that issue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up for discussion and direction for staff this evening is the regional housing needs assessment for RENA numbers for the 2023 through 2031 cycle. Monte Sereno has been allocated 140 units according to the proposal put forth by the Association, Association of Bay Area Governments or ABAG. Our previous RENA cycle allocation was 60 units, which Monte Sereno was able to exceed during the last cycle. For the entire seven Bay Area counties, ABAG has proposed 441,176 units based on the planned Bay Area 2050 blueprint. The methodology utilized to award Monte Sereno and other Bay Area cities units was chosen from the list of five objectives in the 2050 blueprint. One, increase the housing supply and the mix of housing types in an equitable manner. Two, promote infill development, efficient development and greenhouse gas reduction. Three, promote better relationships between jobs and housing, particularly job housing fit. Four, balance existing disproportionate concentrations of income categories. And objective five, affirmatively further fair housing. Some options for council consideration this evening may be wait and see what numbers are adopted at the January 8th ABAG meeting, when this matter is heard before drafting a response. Two, send a letter objecting to the current proposed number and Monte Sereno's reasons why we may object to those numbers. Three, accept the numbers in their current form, assuming Monte Sereno can achieve those numbers through accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Four, sign on to an objection letter with other agencies who also may be objecting to the methodologies used in the study. Five, engage a consultant or legal counsel to pick a path forward, assuming these numbers become a mandate. These are just some ideas. I'm looking forward to the council discussion. And with that, Mr. Rudman and I are open for questions on this. Thank you.
Okay, let's start with council member questions of staff regarding this. Let's hold discussion until after we open public comment. Do we have any specific questions initially? Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, thank you for the reports. Pretty detailed, and I still trying to figure out what the bottom line number is for Monte Sereno. I mean, I saw three or four different numbers. So what are they asking us to do? And there's a proposal, there's two, three different entities that are making proposals.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I think it was slide 35 where they covered a range of numbers beginning with at the top about 190 units for Monte Sereno, and the bottom number was 140 units for the next cycle.
Yeah, let me, let me, can you put that on the screen or is there a page number?
Yes, let me see if we can locate that. If our IT can put the report up on the screen and we can scroll through, I could slide 35 or 40.
I'm not seeing any slide numbers on these things.
Or the page number in the, it wouldn't be a slide, it would be the page number in the council package.
Okay. Look at the computer screen.
I'm going through it on my screen.
Okay, great.
It's on slide 42 in the presentation.
Almost there. A few more pages. That's it right there. Scroll up slowly. You can scroll up just a little bit more. You can see at the top of the page, the number 190. Then you see 180, 170, 160, 150, 140, and then our previous RENA numbers from the 2015, 2023 cycle, which were 60. It is my understanding that the recommended number being proposed is 140 based on the methodology choice 8A that they arrived at in the, in the discussion of the slides, which was being recommended. And you see here several other options, 3B, 3A, 2B, 2A, 1B, 1A. But I believe the, what is being proposed is 140 units according to the recommended option 8A.
All right, any further questions? Again, we'll, we'll have time for discussion as we go forward, but other clarifying questions?
And I will sort of supplement, you know, that information presented by the city manager, you know, at this time, the allocations that are, you know, presented to the council are, of course, draft numbers. There is a possibility for those numbers to change. First, you know, the methodology that has been proposed by ABAG is still subject to review by HCD. And ABAG has yet, as I understand it, to send that methodology to HCD for its review and approval. After, you know, the methodology is, you know, approved by HCD, there is also the possibility that there will be appeals by local jurisdictions of their particular numbers. If those appeals happen, then, you know, there's the potential that some of these numbers may shift. Although I suspect in the case of Monte Sereno, it being such a small Although I suspect in the case of Monteserino, it being such a small jurisdiction. I think that it is probably not entirely likely that these numbers will radically be different. But, you know, there's certainly anything but final at this point.
Councilmember Turner. You're muted. You're still muted.
Okay, am I muted?
Now you're good. Yes.
Okay. I don't know if it's, this is a good time for me to interject here, the new numbers that were introduced December 18th at the A-BAG meeting. So, so, so let me go ahead and talk about that. The California Cities Association, November 16. Wrote a letter that we all voted on, there were 15 jurisdictions, including unincorporated Santa Clara County, which, which is 16. To send a letter to A-BAG. And California Cities Association actually objected to the methodology to allocating the largest share of the numbers to Santa Clara County. So we had 100 and missing 143,550. Now, they also asked each jurisdiction to send letters from the council directly to A-BAG at that time. So at the December 18 meeting, which they said that they were going to have another meeting, the exact same meeting, January the 8th. A-BAG. The numbers that they introduced at that time were, were different. And, and, and if I may, I want, I want to talk a little bit about that. There were, they asked, I, I actually posted on Nextdoor. I, a, a post talking about asking the citizens to send letters in to A-BAG. And based on that, they gave us feedback that they received 57 letters, public letters for the entire Santa Clara County. They also said that eight jurisdictions actually sent letters in about opposing the methodology. So as a result of that, there were changes to the numbers. So let me talk a little bit about the biggest changes that we saw. Los Altos, for example, well, the biggest numbers, the reduction in numbers were from Los Altos, Palo Alto. Campbell and Cupertino. And for example, Campbell went from 3,964 to 3,005. And that was negative 24%. Los Altos went from 200, 2,267 to 1,958. And that was 14%. Palo Alto had actually the biggest decrease in their numbers. And that was 39%. There were jurisdictions that had increases and these jurisdictions, as far as I know, did not send any letters in. They were Los Gatos, Los Gatos went up by 3%. So that was from 1,939 to 1,993. Monteserino, our numbers went up from 191 to 192. So we had one unit. And then Mountain View had, had a negative 1% as well, so a reduction. So, so based on that, um, what I'm asking the council to consider tonight is actually sending a letter based on our objection to the methodology. If we do that, I don't see any downside, right? We can send a letter saying we objected to the methodology and we would like our numbers reduced. Now I talked to one of the members of Palo Alto City Council. And I asked them what they actually did to get their numbers to a negative 39%. And they said they wrote a letter. Not only did they write a letter, they wrote a pretty aggressive letter. And so they believe that that's how they reduce their numbers. Now, A-BAG will actually have the final number at the end of January 2021. So I believe we still have time to write that letter, they could consider it now.
Councilmember Turner, you muted yourself.
Oh, sorry.
There you are.
When we, when they reduce the allocation for one county, another county will have to pick it up. So, so that's where they have to do some studies. So, so that's my input into all of this.
So. Okay. Yes, so Councilmember Mechacheck, again, we're, we're in the question session. If you have a question, let's go ahead and present it and get it answered. Otherwise, I'm going to open public comment and then move to full council discussion. So did you have a specific question you wanted to follow up on? Yes.
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right, and I think we can probably call on staff if we have specific questions as we go to discussion. Let's open this for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to comment on item five, please raise your hand. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to full council discussion on this. So anyone wish to speak, go ahead and just raise your hand, Councilmember Mechacheck.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, if I look on page eight of the presentation, illustrative allocations by county. And the total is 441,176. The numbers that you were going through, did, did that 441,176 change? And did the 143,550 to Santa Clara County change?
Yes, it did. The, 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 uh, the number for Santa Clara County used to be 143,550. At the December 18th meeting, that number went down to 129,927. So that's a 9% decrease. However, Monteserino only, only got a one unit decrease. So that's why I'm recommending that we at least send a letter saying, hey, we would like to, to get our numbers decreased as well.
And what was?
If you look at our allocation from the last 2015, it's, it's 135%. We were at 60 and now we're at 190.
Understood, so when I'm looking at these different, in appendix two. I'm looking at Portola Valley, for example, they've got 1,789 households. They went from 60 to 200 on 1,789. So, and when I look at Atherton, they went from 90 to 290 on 2284. Hillsborough 90 to 470 on 3443. Woodside 60 to 250 on 2011. And then where's, uh, Los Gatos is from six, sorry, from 620, they went up to 1440 on one, on 12,584. And they're around 10 times our size. And you're saying, so, so I'm, I'm trying to put our numbers into context. So it, it seems like they're very similar to the others. In fact, we may be a little light, but Los Gatos went down, you said?
No, the Los Gatos number went from 1,939 to 1,993. So that's a 3%. This graph, this, 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 um, several slides that you're looking at, it's not the same set of slides that they presented at the December 18th meeting. The December 18 meeting was a slightly different set of slides.
Then I would say anything, well, first of all, it would be good to see the numbers from the December 18th meeting. And then second of all, any letter that we send, I believe should be based on our understanding of, of what those numbers are and why they changed. So that we can put forth a persuasive position on why our numbers should change.
Well, I think Mayor, well, uh, Councilmember Lawler and City Manager Steve Leonardi's actually drafted the letter that went to Jim Beal. So we can use part of that letter to come up with our, with our reasoning as to why we're objecting to the numbers. And we could also use the California Cities letter objecting to the actual methodology. So yes, we could, we can combine all of those. Did I lose you guys?
No, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, you're on mute.
Yes.
Now, okay.
I was being good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm working on my, my lip reading capabilities here. Um, I agree with both of you. I, I think we definitely need to draft a letter, we can take all of these and put them into one, or we could do a variety of things. And I think it's really important that in the past, I know we've laid low and we've tried to fly under the radar. But I think the environment is changing now. And I, I don't know if you saw the two articles in today's paper. You know, COVID's obviously made things change. We have population growth that has drastically slowed down since the nineties. And which is going to leave us with an older population. And we have Oracle and HP and all these big employers leaving, right? So I think it's important that we have an opportunity now to actually say something because silence in this case is not golden. It would be considered acceptance. So we definitely, I believe we need to say something and have, take the opportunity to do so. And given that the track record of the other jurisdictions that have sent in letters and successfully had their numbers reduced. I think it's, it's, it could certainly couldn't hurt to send one in, so I'm all in favor of that.
Yes, and just let me, let me just add, you know, that when I talked to Palo Alto and Cupertino, they were very, very aggressive with their letter. They even talked about litigating with HCV on, on the numbers that they have. Now, we don't have to go that far if we don't want to, if we don't feel comfortable. But that's how they were able to get their numbers. If you look at Palo Alto, they had 39% reduction. And Cupertino was the same way.
Right.
And if we can get our numbers to go down to 100 instead of 190, that would be good. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I, I don't know if you like.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem Alahi. Now you're on mute.
I don't, I don't think we have a choice, we really have to take an aggressive stand. I mean, you know, you're confronted with this every time it comes up. I'm looking at another slide or whatever it is, which is, and I can't identify the number based on which says this, under the plan Bay Area 2050 growth educated by CCMC. Monteserino was supposed to build only three houses. And in the plan Bay Area 2050, future households advanced by ATMC became 140. So I don't know if the three is a good number for us to focus on. Or maybe, well, I know it is a good number for us to focus on, where, where, wherever that came from. But really, there is no, there is no place in Monteserino to build anything, whether it's 100 units or 200 units. I guess it doesn't really matter, you know, after a while, you could have as many zeros as you want after one. And if you don't have the money, it doesn't really matter, or you're 100,000 or 100 million. So I, I would take a position that there is no place in Monteserino. Here's somebody, and I don't know if you guys can find that slide. It's probably way towards the end. But the third or fourth page at the bottom.
Yeah, that, that slide, the, the three number actually came from Contra Costa County. They did a study and based on study, they said that Monteserino's number should be a three. Now, if I were to look at the Contra Costa number, right, from, from A-BAG, they actually went up. The Contra Costa number was 43,942. December 18, it went up to 48,932.
All right, so we're interested in our numbers, if they give us a three number, maybe we should look at that study and justify. You know, basically we're no job, no growth, no commercial place and no property to build anything on. And for us, it's going to be a total revamp of Monteserino, it's going to look like something else. So I would do a study, look at the Contra Costa report and see if you can use that and focus on this three number. And so that's what, that's where we should be sitting at.
If we get that three numbers, we can close our, our ad hoc committee.
All right, let's do it, let's do it. Yeah, Steve, you have any comments on that? Or I guess Brian's got his hands up, sorry.
Yeah, Brian's got his hand up, let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Mechacheck first.
In terms of the letter, is this something that the housing legislation ad hoc committee should work on? And then bring forward to the council as a work product?
It looks like, I'd like to comment on that, it looks like we're going to have a timing issue here. Because this needs to be turned in as soon as possible. So I think the goal is really tonight to leave here with enough direction that staff and working with me to put a signature on a letter can complete the process. And that we need to probably target to get that to the January 8th A-BAG meeting. If we can, but if not, certainly as early as possible and well before we next meet as a council. I'm seeing Councilmember Turner nodding her head.
Yes, we need to get it before, well before January 8th, because the meeting, the next meeting is January 8th. And I don't believe there's going to be another meeting until they make the final decision on the January 2021.
Okay, so ideally, we will be providing enough direction to, to staff and myself that we can put together a final letter and sign off on it. So moving that direction, I think what I've heard from everyone is a general agreement about taking an aggressive stance and speaking up. I think we've got five members, myself included, who say that we need to do that and we need to do it aggressively. I heard from Mayor Protem Alahi that we should certainly take a look and see if the Contra Costa methodology can inform our letter in any way to give us some argument points about why that methodology is correct. We all know that it's correct for several reasons. The built out nature of Monte Sereno, the lack of, lack of space, lack of opportunity. But that wasn't what Contra Costa was necessarily looking at. They were looking at jobs and other issues, jobs creation, access to transportation. There were many things that went into their matrix. But interestingly, their matrix was really the matrix that benefited us despite being here. And I think we've been accused of being in a job-rich area. And then had the same types of increases, the same types of numbers dumped on us with absolutely no consideration to traffic, to public transit, to the fact that we are not jobs creators. So we're not contributing to the creation of jobs problem here. It's not necessarily our cities to solve. So I think we should certainly be looking to see if anything from the Contra Costa arguments can inform us. I guess the other question that I would have in drafting this, I think that Ms. Lawler and Mr. Leonardi's personal letters that went out do give us a lot of good talking points. And as you mentioned, Councilmember Turner, the California cities can also point us to things to complain about. I guess the only other. I guess the only other question I would have would be, is there any way that we can access Palo Alto's letter or any of the other very aggressive letters and, uh, see about weaving some of that, uh, aggressive argument into our response?
I can try. I, I, I tried the first time and, and both of them said, just go to the website for California cities, but I'll try, see if I can get that, get that letter.
Okay, either we might, we might be able to get it from California cities if it's been turned in or from A-Bag if they've posted it as a public comment that they've received.
That I didn't see it.
Okay, or, um, if, uh, if you're not able to, perhaps, uh, our city manager could reach out as well to city manager or our city attorney could reach out to the city attorney for Palo Alto and/or Los Altos, uh, Cupertino, some of these people who've taken aggressive stances. But it looks like we need to turn this letter around and, uh, make sure that we have enough guidance, uh, to, to go ahead and put it out. I think, uh, probably, uh, from what I've heard, uh, the only other question that we should probably clarify with council, since we will be writing this uh, based on direction from council and then going ahead and sending it out directly, would be, do we want to go so far as to put in the either veiled or not at all veiled threat of litigation in the event that they hit us with an unreasonable number such as a hundred and ninety? Uh, maybe we can pull the council, uh, across my screen from, uh, right to left. Uh, Ms. Turner, what's your feeling about whether we should or should not be threatening litigation within the letter?
Well, I, I think we're running out of time at this point, right? I mean, we're, we're, we're January fifth and they're going to make a decision pretty soon. So my suggestion is yes, to go, to go, to be aggressive at this point.
And include a threat of litigation in the event that the numbers are not acceptable.
Yeah, if we can get a, we can get a sample letter, that would be good as well. I mean, if we can get one from Palo Alto or Cupertino, right, that we, we, we should certainly do that.
Right. Well, I'm thinking that we will, we'll work from the samples we have, we'll integrate what we could get. Um, but I did, and then we'll be sending it out without further council meeting based on the direction that we get tonight. But I did want to, uh, have a clear direction from each council member to see if we have a consensus about uh, avoiding a threat of litigation or including a threat of litigation, since that's a fairly significant item. Uh, Councilmember Mekachak, as I move across my screen, your comments?
Uh, I don't think we should threaten litigation. I think it would be better to write the letter and imply that we would move aggressively, but I wouldn't explicitly threaten litigation.
Mayor, if I may interject at this moment, um, you know, typically, you know, the decision to initiate litigation is going to be the councils as a whole and is going to be something the council would make in closed session, you know, following a meeting on that subject. But, you know, there, there is no reason why the city in its letter to, you know, A-Bag or, or maybe in subsequent communications to, um, you know, HCD. Oftentimes you'll have language in letters like these that says, you know, the city reserves all applicable rights and remedies, uh, including seeking, you know, legal relief as, as may be necessary. Um, you know, it, it, it doesn't commit the city to any sort of course of action. It just says that the city reserves all of its rights. Um, and, you know, oftentimes that's enough to convey the seriousness with which, you know, you're taking the subject.
Yes, thank you. And, uh, yeah, Councilmember Mekachak, you're fine with, uh, that type of language.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, I agree. I think that, that sounds about right.
And Mayor Protemalahi, your thoughts on, uh, kind of the reserve all rights, including legal remedies?
Yeah, I, I think that's the preferred language of lawyers, because if you say I'm going to sue you, then you have to sue them, otherwise it's considered inappropriate to give that kind of a threat. I was also thinking that we should probably talk to some of the smaller cities, because our case is really going to be more than just what Contra Costa has argued is, uh, uniqueness, uh, for small cities. So if we can make, uh, some leos or, you know, some friends with some of the other cities, smaller cities that are in our position. Uh, then it could be, if you are going to do litigation, it would be good if you can join with, uh, some other cities and join hands with them and, uh, do it together. And I, I don't know if you have, obviously, we don't have enough time while we do that letter, but that, uh, start should be made to make friends with other cities that are similarly situated or close to as similar as they can be situated. So that if a lawsuit is filed, it's kind of based on our circumstances. And, uh, uh, basically saying, you know, you're, this is, this is a unique situation you're trying to destroy, we apply for, uh, the citizens that, you know, uh, living in this area, you're not getting much out of it.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, I think, uh, I think actually, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem, that's going to be your assignment as part of the ad hoc committee. Will be some of that outreach to other cities as we go forward.
Okay.
To determine who's similarly situated. Uh, Belvedere always comes to mind. Uh, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, actually, um, the, uh, Southern, Southern California has started, um, looking at pushing back with HCV and they've done this for a year now. And they have invited us to, to their meetings so we could take advantage of some of their, uh, BKM, some of their best-known methods, be able to deal with pushing back. Uh, Huntington Beach, for example, has, has, has done this. So, yeah, I, I, I can bring you into some of the discussions, um, Mayor Protemalahi, if you want to.
That was good, I. And I think we should also be concerned about the new winner bills that are coming out, which require ten units, houses and things of that sort, so.
Yes, that's SB eleven twenty formerly, and it's now, I think it's AB nine.
Good.
Okay, so, um, closing this, it looks like we have a clear consensus to get this letter uh, kind of cleaned up, wrapped up and sent out, uh, in the next couple of days. Uh, the general content of the letter has been outlined and, uh, then, um, if, uh, it looks like we will, do we need a resolution on this or is guidance enough? And I'm asking that of council.
I, I would recommend the council, you know, uh, pass a motion authorizing the mayor to send a letter on this subject on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have someone who wants, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protemalahi has made the motion. Do we have a second? We've got a second from Councilmember Lawler and ready for a vote.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Protemalahi?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
The ma, uh, motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to the next order of business, that's committee and commission reports. Anyone have committee and commission reports to provide at this time? Please raise your hand. Council, uh, Mayor Protemalahi?
Uh, just on Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Uh, they have been able to, uh, uh, get a bond rating, which is, uh, allows them to basically make money on selling, uh, tax, uh, deductible bonds. And that saves them, uh, uh, can save them, uh, quite a large sum. And, uh, SNP has given them an A rating based on the, the work they've done. And so all the cities that are involved with that, including our city. Uh, I think you've done a good job in not only giving, uh, uh, gas-free energy to the citizens, but also now taking it to the next step, but they'll be able to build more, uh, items with less expenditure. And at some point, I guess our city is going to look at that too, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the people who give those ratings to see if that helps us out or not.
All right, thank you. Any other committee and commission reports? Seeing none, we move to the section of the agenda, council member comments. Any council member comments, uh, not including future agenda items, which we'll come to shortly?
I'm looking at the races in Georgia. They're tied right now, so it's going to be close. About ninety-four percent of the precincts are in.
Yeah, I, uh, my comment, uh, actually, I decided to save it for this part of the meeting rather than at the opening. But, uh, I was reflecting, uh, as we watch the divisive politics across the nation uh, on our, uh, first of all, our non-partisanship. And second of all, on our oath to defend the constitution and the laws of our state. And, uh, perhaps in some people's mind, that is something that they can have different interpretations of. But in my mind, uh, both when I took that oath as a lawyer and when I took that oath coming into this office, I take it very seriously and, uh, find it very disappointing that, uh, people are not necessarily stepping up to defend the constitution. So I'm looking forward to, uh, where we end up after we're through this turbulent times. And, uh, looking forward to a better twenty-one. Uh, but as all politics begin locally, I hope we can all, uh, reflect on our oath of defending the constitution and the laws of the state and doing the right things. So those are my comments on that. Um, moving on to the, uh, if there are no other council member comments, we'll move ahead to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to offer thanks to our residents for supporting our youth commission holiday coat drive. Montesereno was able to collect twenty-two coats for those in need this winter. The coats were brought to West Valley Community Services on January fourth. And the West Valley Community Services representatives were very grateful for the contribution of the coats. Next, I wanted to invite council to take a walk on the Wimberly Walkway. Wimberly Walkway is a three hundred eighty-eight foot pathway which connects the end of Xena Avenue to Eaton Avenue. The pathway is an easement which is well-traveled by our residents. Over the holiday season, Montesereno staff installed new railings, signage, power washed and patched the concrete and did some general cleanup of the area. Some of the neighbors have began to apply little artsy sculptures made mostly from their, um, organic findings from what they find along the, the walkway to the fence. Uh, so kind of like a little art gallery thing going on there. So if you're in the neighborhood, come on down and take a look. And that concludes my comments this evening.
Yeah, I, I saw that sign for the Wimberly Walkway. Who, who is Wimberly, or do you have a history on that?
Yes, so Mr. Wimberly was the former city manager, uh, manager and public works director who, uh, at the time the walkway was installed, oversaw the placement of the walkway. And, um, there's kind of an interesting historical anecdote about the Mr. Wimberly and the council and his disagreement. He actually wanted to let the easement go to the neighboring properties, just, you know, because of the costs associated with building the walkway and the maintenance over the years. But the council overruled, uh, Mr. Wimberly and, um, voted to keep the easement and keep it as a passage, which was, it, all these years later, about thirty-five years later, the, the right call, of course, because it is very well-used by the public, uh, by the school students traveling to Dave's. So it's, it's a very strategic little access point connecting Xena Avenue, the Walriconada neighborhood to Eaton Avenue and beyond.
And he's a resident of Las Gatas today.
Well, he does reside in Las Gatas now, I believe, yes.
Well, that's, that's, that's a story you can publish in the newsletter.
I was considering that.
Yeah, get him out there, take his photograph with the.
I, I actually, uh, was going to, um, speak with Mayor Luthold about doing a little dedication, kind of a thirty-fifth anniversary rededication of the, the walkway. Um, but of course, it's the COVID time, so we'll have to plan for that sometime later in the year, perhaps.
All right. Great, um, Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, I just want to thank you, uh, Mr. Leonardi and of course, uh, former Mayor Jack Lucas in making that, this renovation possible and preserving this little gem of our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, and I add my thanks to that. Uh, I, I was walking up Eaton, uh, about a week ago and walking my dog. And he demanded to turn right onto the walkway and head around the circle through Xena. It was very fun to watch because, I have a Saint Bernard that weighs about a hundred and sixty pounds and he was convinced that he wanted to take the walkway and did so. So it was quite fun. Um, okay, uh, so future agenda items, I, uh, wanted to go ahead and I will jump in. Uh, I heard, uh, Ms. Craig's, uh, request that we consider making a statement, uh, about, uh, some of the, uh, justice issues and the treatment of citizens and free speech within appropriate limits and respect. Uh, I think we should do something about that as a council. Uh, we have a fairly full agenda next meeting, but if, uh, we don't have, uh, a wide-open slot early in February, uh, my recommendation would be to go ahead and try to put something together and bring it back to the next meeting. If we do have a light schedule in February, uh, maybe we could do that in the first meeting in February. Uh, city manager, what is your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we could probably bring that back on February second, as you mentioned, the February nineteenth, uh, or the, excuse me, January nineteenth agenda is, uh, getting pretty full at this point in time. But that would also get us more time, um, to put something together as well, and I will work with, uh, Mr. Rudin on that. Um, as well as solicit feedback from the council members. Regarding, um, the comments made by, um, the speaker earlier, I just wanted to let the public know, I forgot to mention, I will be meeting with the police chief on January twentieth. So I will be covering that subject as well as other important topics on behalf of Montesereno at that time. And we will report to council after that.
Okay, um, and I heard earlier, uh, that we are looking at an agenda item for, uh, considering adopting the ad hoc finance committee and defining the charter for that. And if necessary, adjusting that with, uh, the other, uh, relevant operational excellence ad hoc committee. Uh, I think if possible, I'd like to see that, uh, brought on to January nineteenth, unless people feel that's an impossibility. Uh, input from the city manager or anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we can get that on for the January nineteenth agenda.
And Councilmember Mekachak, you had a comment?
I was, uh, going to agree with, uh, uh, City Manager Leonardi's, uh, comment that it, it can happen.
Okay, and you're going to work on what that charter might look like in a draft format, correct?
Absolutely.
Great. Um, does anyone else have any other future agenda items, uh, that are reasonably urgent at this time? Seeing none.
Make a comment. I intend to, on January nineteenth meeting, bring back the schedule of all of the, uh, ongoing city business items for the calendar year. So the complete calendar year of kind of existing agenda items that we have in place already. So council has an idea of what the year will look like and where there might be room to add future agenda items in, in the future.
Great, uh, Mayor Protemalahi?
Yeah. City Manager Leonardi, I think that's a good idea. I know you did the weekly reports or maybe one monthly reports about all the items that were coming in and sent us emails, uh, uh, for a few, I guess I stopped a couple of months ago. So it might be a good idea at least to do that, uh, every so often. I don't know if you need to do it on a monthly basis, but just laying out what the different action items are and what's coming down the pipeline.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, I intend to resume, uh, those reports. We do have a lot to speak of, so I look forward to, uh, issuing one this week. That's kind of a, a, a recap of the last couple of months of two thousand twenty. And then we will continue on the future with, uh, some reports as you requested. So I very much enjoy giving you the good news.
All right, thank you, sir.
Great. Um, and, uh, City Manager, you brought up that you have a meeting with the police chief on January twentieth. Uh, this is more into the council member comments than necessarily future. This is more into the council member comments than necessarily future agenda items, but I note that we have received a few citizen comments, complaints, suggestions that the city can consider one, potentially formally adopting a mask ordinance and asking that it be enforced by the Los Gatos Police Department in one case, and in another case, requesting information about enforcement and expressing displeasure that the ball is being kicked to the county enforcement line where there is no follow-up. So I would request that when you speak with the police chief, perhaps you can look into whether the Los Gatos police can respond. Some of these complaints are not just neighbors tattling on neighbors. These are neighbors complaining about serious violations at construction sites next to their properties and potential serious issues, given that we've been in lockdown and are seeing another surge. So I would look for, first of all, whether we can get enforcement at a more local level from our Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police Department with the existing laws and or whether we need to pass some sort of a local ordinance and then request the police to enforce that ordinance, if that's the only way to do this without asking our people to call a useless county hotline. So I don't know if you have any immediate input on that, or if that's something you'll get back to us after you speak with the police chief on. And Ms. Lawler, you have your hand up.
I do, I do, actually, because I've been on the task force during the year, and one of the members of the task force is involved with county enforcement, and there's actually a recently new template that they have sent, just sent me, and I can send to the city. That is a template that cities can use for violation codes. So I will forward that to Steve. And potentially, that could hopefully be worked into helping residents in terms of complaints, just to get another, to get an official complaint from the city regarding a contractor.
Great.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I can comment, glad to entertain what we can do within our legal means to achieve whatever we need to do to preserve the public safety. And I would defer to Mr. Rudin on the ID, idea of possibly adopting a future ordinance and what would be involved with that and its enforcement. Or and or working with the Los Gatos Police Department to, you know, have residents report violations. I will say that I do periodically hear when somebody is cited by the county, the fines are very serious. Restaurants in downtown Los Gatos, five thousand dollar fines, threats of them being shut down. All kinds of, you know, on a second or third warning, very serious that contractors, business or contractors license could be suspended. So for those out there listening, the county hotline, although it may be very busy to get through, there's also a way to email the county, and we have the connection on our website, on our COVID link, on our montesereno.org website. I would encourage residents to, in the short run, if you see violators, to report them through the county. And they will, they will enforce it, although I understand. You know, it was, we're just coming out of the holidays, and I think there may have been some closure at the county and things that, as well as closure at the city and things that caused a little bit delay. But we will pursue what we can, and we look forward to Councilmember Lawler's correspondence. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. It looks like we have exhausted the discussion and future agenda items. And so on that note, I will adjourn the meeting until the next meeting, November, sorry, January nineteenth. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Good night.
You good night.
Thank you.